Mr. President, you have a call.
Thank you. To the audience, I would like to apologize for being late. We have adjourned our closed session and the closed session will resume after this meeting. Thank you. Is there a report on any actions taken in the closed session?
Yes, Mr. President. At tonight's closed session, the board voted to approve the appointment of the following public employee contracts, which are subject to contractual agreement by the chancellor. One, ratification of Lilia Selhey as the acting vice president of instruction for Berkeley City College from May 10, 2013 through June 20, 2013, at $130,000 per year. Six A's, one absence. Two, David Yang, Director of Fiscal Services, District Office, from June 12, 2013 through June 12, 2015, at $110,000 per year. I's six, nays one, trustee Brown. Number two, or number three, Josefina Baltonado, interim vice president of Student Services, Laney College, from September 30, 2013 through August 30, 2013, at $80,000 per year, or until the regular position is filled. That was a unanimous vote, seven-zero. Also, and finally, the appointment of Kerry Compton, interim vice president of instruction at Berkeley City College, from July 1, 2013 through October 1, 2013, at $145,000 per year, until the regular position is filled, and that was unanimous vote, seven-zero. And that concludes the report out so far of the closed session. And if these individuals are present in the audience, would you please stand to be recognized? Seeing none, we wish you well and congratulations on your new position. Mr. President, that concludes the report for this evening.
Thank you. We now come to the approval of the agenda. I believe we have some items. There's a modest change to the agenda. Item 22, there will be an addition of three names. And do we have those names? Yes.
Item, item number 22, Mr. President, we're adding the names Ronald Jones from 61213 through 63013. Instructional assistant, machine technology at Laney College. Joel Nguyen, Juan, from 6132013 through 63013. Instructional assistant, Juan DSPSS, at Berkeley City College. Gwendolyn York, from 61213 through 63013. That's clerical assistant, too, at BCC. We're also, Mr. President, would like to remove item number 24 from the agenda.
And what is that item? For anyone may be interested.
Sure. Item number 24, that has been pulled from the agenda.
It's workload reduction.
Is considered approval of workload reduction for Rob and Mark Freeman. That item is no longer on the agenda.
Thank you very much. With those changes, is there a move to approve the agenda?
Moved.
Seconded? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstentions? Thank you. It's unanimous. Is there a move to approve the minutes?
Show moved.
Second? Discussion? There being no discussion, call for the question. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Okay. Thank you. I believe I should make the announcement that trustee.
Gonzalez, yeah?
Yes, that trustee Gonzalez Yan is on the, is attending here via a telephone. At this point, we come to a very happy moment in this, tonight's agenda, to swearing-in ceremony for incoming student trustees. And I believe they have to be sworn in, and it's my responsibility to give them this onerous charge. And I'm very happy to do so and very happy to welcome them. So I'll step down. If I may proceed. Now, I will read this and you just repeat what I have to say, okay?
Okay.
All right. I, meaning you.
I, Sharon Clay.
I, Wiley.
Wiley. Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
To carry out my responsibilities as student trustees.
To carry out my responsibilities as student trustees.
Of Peralta Community College District.
Of Peralta Community College District.
I do personally commit myself.
I do personally commit myself.
To convey the concerns of the student body.
To convey the concerns of the student body.
To the Board of Trustees.
To the Board of Trustees.
And to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees.
And to convey the concerns of the Board of Trustees.
To the student body, to the best of my ability.
To the student body, to the best of my ability.
And that was a very vigorous response. I think they're duly in place here, and my congratulations to both of you. for his service to Peralta. As many of you know, he is leaving the district and will take over the chancellorship of a, of a college in Alaska. And trustee Handy, will you conduct this presentation, please?
It's unfortunate that Dr. Ing can't be with us tonight, but we really want you all to, to see the recognition and the resolution that we have for him. I worked with Dr. Ing all my time that I've been here, 11 years, and, and he, his presence will be missed here. So whereas Dr. Ing has demonstrated 28 years of progressively responsible leadership experience in the California Community College system, and whereas Dr. Ing has served as a tenured faculty position at Laney College, Chair of the Counseling Department, Dean of Student Services, Director of International Education, Associate Vice Chancellor of International Affairs, Distance and Community Education, and Vice Chancellor of Student Services at Peralta Community College District, spanning over 24 years. While serving as a faculty member at Laney College, Dr. Ing founded and spearheaded a number of programs, such as the Faculty Diversity Internship Program and the Asian Pacific American Leadership Project for at-risk students, and founded the international and distance education programs at Peralta. So, Dr. Ing has generated over $40 million since 1997 in revenue for Peralta, attracting and retaining international students through strengthening international and out-of-state recruitment. I don't know anyone else can make that claim. So whereas Dr. Ing initiated and built a sustainable network with educational entities in foreign countries that resulted in strengthening educational programs and establishing partnerships with overseas institutions, which expanded study abroad programs. Now therefore be resolved that the Peralta Community College District honors Dr. Jacob Ing for his many accomplishments and dedicated service to the district, and wishes him the best in his future endeavors. Thank you, Dr. Ing.
Thank you, trustee Handy. At this point, I understand there are no comments from public communication in the, on the agenda with respect to any of the agenda items or to the public in general. At this point, then, we come to public hearings, and I'll gavel in the public hearings. And I believe, Dr. Trudy Largent, would you like to just comment on this for the public's information?
Yes, thank you, trustee. The first item is the opportunity for public comment on the previously sunshine initial proposal for reopener by Local 39 to the Peralta Community College District. The second item is opportunity for public comment on the contract reopeners that were previously sunshine by the district to Local 39. And the third item is the previously sunshine contract reopeners for negotiation for the district to Local 1021 for public comment.
Okay, so this is an opportunity for the public to make comments, and, and so I ask, are there any members of the public that wish to make a comment? And there being none, I officially gavel out this special meeting. And now we move on to reports. And we begin with associated student government reports. Are there representative from the student government that wish to make a report this evening?
Greetings, everyone. Members of the board, community members, college presidents. My name is Sinead Anderson, and I'm here to give the report on behalf of the Associated Students of Merritt College. I am the outgoing student body president. Thank you. Thank you. It has been a phenomenal year. The Associated Students of Merritt College has received amazing support from the president's office, student services, all across the board. At this time, we have been requesting student activities advisors, and we are proud that our answers have been, excuse me, that we have been heard. Merritt College has hired Victor Littles. He is oncoming and working with the new AS. They've already started their training. The training will start. They will have their first meeting this Thursday at 11:00 a.m. The Peralta Student Council is also convening to set up trainings for all of the students. The student governments, all of the ASs, ASLC, ASMC, ASCOA, and ASBCC, are all working together to put together a training for all of the student governments. This will serve as a training for the clubs, as well as the new AS presidents, the officers, the senators. They will talk about things, facilitating meetings. They're going to go over what the district means. They're going to go over everything that will make a successful year for all of the associated student body members. At this time, I would like to say thank you for all of your support and listening to all of us. We appreciate you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we move to the chancellor's reports.
Thank you very much, President Galasso. Let me start by letting the board know that during our last meeting, there was a request for further information regarding our contracting and purchasing practices. So I have scheduled a work session, study session, rather, with the board for our June 25 meeting, so that we can not only share with you our processes, but certainly answer any questions you may have. Since our last board meeting, many of us participated in four college graduations. Each of the colleges had their graduations. I guess it's been two weeks now, and I want to commend the presidents for a fine job. It was, each one was different, but each one was great. And I want to thank the staff at each of the colleges and congratulate all the students who have graduated this year. And finally, I want to let the board and the public know that we have completed all administrative evaluations this year. We will be coming in with recommendations to the board next board meeting. And I, too, spend some time in doing my own self-evaluation that I hope the board considers in this next meeting as well. Thank you very much. And just to continue, we have Vice Chancellor Trudy Largent is going to share information on the EEO plan that should be in your packet.
Thank you, Chancellor. There's a very voluminous document in your board report packet, and it is the District Equal Employment Opportunity Plan. And just as a general overview, that plan is required by all community college districts through Title V of the State Chancellor's Office, and the district is required to submit that plan to the State Chancellor's Office by June 28 of this year, and to be in compliance with Title V. The plan was a collaboration with all constituency groups who served on the EEO Plan Task Force for the district and prepared that plan. The plan itself is a model mandated by the State Chancellor's Office to provide guidance to district as to what must be contained in the plan and what is an option. The district decided to include not only all of the mandates, but also all of the optional provisions of the 16 components of the EEO plan. And for the board's information, the district also provided a number of demographic data concerning full-time employee, part-time faculty, the 21 positions for faculty that we have recruited for. We also broke down each one of those by discipline and the applicant data for that. We thought that would be helpful to know. And as you also will see, there are some notations for those positions that have been filled for faculty positions. We notated the ethnicity of the candidate that was selected. All of that will be part of the district EEO diversity report, and the district will be preparing the full demographic data once all the faculty positions are filled. That's my report.
Thank you very much, Vice Chancellor. And as is customary at our board meetings, whenever a college or the district has a grant proposal to submit, we like to share that information with the Board of Trustees. And this evening, I'll ask President Jackson to share with us the intent to apply for grants.
Thank you, Chancellor, and good evening to the Board of Trustees, my colleagues, and members of the community. The College of Alameda is looking at applying for a grant called the Susan Hayward Training Grant. It's a federal grant. It's focusing on OSHA training. There's a total of about $1.5 million that will be distributed. It's anticipated that that will relate to about $110,000 per college. The primary goal of that grant is to increase safety in high-risk areas. And as you know, the College of Alameda has its Atlas program, the Alameda Transportation and Logistics Support System. And that grant will allow us to incorporate more OSHA training. We're currently doing OSHA 10, which is a certified training by OSHA, Train the Trainers, and we have a certified trainer on staff. And so with this grant, it will allow us to do more and integrate that into our existing programs.
I had a question about that program, the Susan Hayward program, and through the chancellor, if I may ask, for clarification, if there are certificates that students earn through the training that'll be part of their employability or increase their employability?
Absolutely. And currently, we offer that at no cost to the students, but we're limited by the amount of money that we have to pay faculty members. So with this additional grant, it'll allow us to pay faculty to offer and integrate that into our existing programs. So when students go out to apply for a job, not only will they have a certificate in truck driving, a certificate, stackable certificates, which is the new trend, but they would also have a certificate in OSHA training, a qualified certificate, OSHA 10. They'll also have a certificate in forklift. They'll have a welding certificate.
Safety.
And safety. So it adds all of those certificates, which means increased employability for our students.
It's wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Dr. Norma Brizcalavie, President of Merritt College, to share with the grant submission she's contemplating.
First five has been, on an annual basis for the last several years, offered the colleges in the area, including Merritt, the opportunity for the professionals in that field to add additional dollars, not only to help students, but the working professionals and faculty in that discipline. They are allowing us to receive approximately over $150,000. Those funds will be used for professional development as well as augmentation to our course offerings to our students. So we, we will get the details once we get the grant.
Thank you very much. And that concludes the reports from the chancellor this evening, President Galasso.
Thank you, Chancellor. And now we have reports from members of the Board of Trustees. Wei?
I don't have it. Yeah.
Okay. All right, thank you.
I just wanted to let the public know, I guess, that the State Assembly passed a bill, I think that would be a devastating impact on community colleges in California that I think sets a dangerous trend for what I see as a privatizing of community colleges. AB 955 passed out of the State Assembly, quite with quite a large margin. And what AB 955 does is allows community colleges like Peralta to charge a differential fee. So if you come for means, you're able to pay for the classes that you want, and what I think it would be a disadvantage to students, and those students that cannot afford access to institutions. So I think it sends a dangerous trend for what a public education ought to be, and I certainly hope that the college administration, I think we've taken a formal position against AB 955, but I hope we take a proactive position rallying against it and urge our legislators to, that represent us, to follow in suit.
May I ask for just a clarification of that? Is this like extension program that we repudiated not too long ago?
It's essentially the same bill that was being pushed by Santa Monica Community College several years ago, so it's similar to those efforts.
Thank you.
Since last week, I had the opportunity to attend the National Conference on Race and Ethnicity in New Orleans. It was a very intensive conference. Dr. Nikki Gonzalez-Juan attended as well. The, the conference was attended by about over 2,500 people this year, and the workshops would go from 7:00 in the morning or 8:00 in the morning all the way until 10:00 p.m., seeing all the latest work that was being done on diversity issues, student issues, how things were handled in different countries, how disasters were handled, when colleges were confronted with those types of issues. And I also had an opportunity to view presentations that I will be giving the information to our student leaders as possible presentations of people who are doing incredible things that are, that students across the U.S. are looking at, but might, also might enjoy seeing here. So I want to thank Peralta for giving me the opportunity to attend this conference, though I have to tell you, going to work is not as difficult as going to conferences. It's just no, and at one point, I had not stepped outside of the hotel for 48 hours, and I knew the world was out there, there just was no time to go and see it. So again, I think that we will be hearing more from some of the presenters that were in core, at in core, and I think that it really just benefits us all to have opportunities to learn how to do things better and work with each other more effectively. Thank you.
Thank you.
The PSC, the Student Council, we're organizing a, our first annual student leadership development training for, on August the 6th through the 9th, and I hope that you guys will put that on your calendar. We would love to come and have many of the administrators and presidents to support our leadership training. I would also like to thank all the students that supported me during the election. It gives me great privilege to be able to continue to serve them on a leadership basis and reach out to all the communities. Working in the International Department, I'm able to also reach out to the different students that come from different countries and, and address their needs as well. And I want to continue to assist Wiley, and I want to say I hope we have a great year together.
Thank you. Trustee Brown?
I would just like to echo the chancellor's comments that the graduations that we were treated to, able to have the good fortune of attending last, at the end of May, were wonderful. The college presidents did a great job. The students were fabulous. The families were joyous, and it was a great opportunity to see the product of so much hard work and to see the best that our institutions have to offer. So thank you for allowing us to participate in that process, and thank you for what you do.
Thank you. And now we'll hear a report by President Carolyn Van Putten of the District Academic Senate.
Thank you, Mr. President, and good evening, trustees, district administration center staff, college presidents, and members of the public. The conclusion of an academic year is a good time to make note of our students' accomplishments, especially those that will be increasingly scrutinized as the Student Success Task Force recommendations are being implemented in the year ahead. In a previous report, I mentioned the number of associate degrees for transfer, ADTs, that have been submitted to the State Chancellor's Office for approval. In April of this year, Peralta colleges submitted four AAT and AST degrees. This month, you've seen in the curriculum report from the Office of Educational Services that another Peralta college degree has been added to the approval pipeline. As of May 29, the California Community College Curriculum Inventory at the State Chancellor's Office shows the target number of ADTs that each Peralta college expects to be active by fall 2014. Of the 10 that College of Alameda expects to offer, two are active, Communication Studies and Mathematics, and eight were in development. This month, College of Alameda faculty are submitting one of the eight for approval, an AAT in English. Berkeley City College set a target of seven ADTs by 2014, all but one of which are now active. BCC's associate degrees for transfer are in Business Administration, Elementary Teacher Education, English, Mathematics, Psychology, and Sociology. A seventh BCC degree will be in Art History. That one is now in development. Laney has been approved for three of the 10 transfer degrees intended to be active by fall 2014 in Business Administration, Communication Studies, and Mathematics. Seven more degrees are in development at Laney. Merritt has activated half of its target of six in Administration of Justice, Business Administration, and Communication Studies. You can see from those numbers that faculty at two of our colleges, College of Alameda and Laney, will be extremely busy developing a total of 14 ADTs expected to be approved by fall 2014. Merritt faculty will be about half that busy developing another three transfer degrees, and BCC will be coasting into its final ADT approval of the seven that BCC set as its target. Of course, that's not the only work that will be absorbing faculty attention next year. We will be heading into comprehensive self-evaluations in preparation for accreditation reviews in 2015, and the entire Peralta District will be working on incorporating the results of Student Learning Outcomes Assessment into our planning and decision-making. We will all be very busy. Since May 2012, Peralta colleges have graduated nine students with associate degrees for transfer, three in English and four in Sociology at BCC, one in Mathematics at Laney, and one in Communication Studies at College of Alameda. Those nine degrees should be added to a preliminary total of 370 AA and 108 AS degrees that were awarded last month. Final numbers on degrees awarded will be available in late July, when the spring term grades have been validated. That concludes my report for tonight. Thank you for receiving it.
Thank you, Dr. Van Putten. And now we move to- And now we move to presentations. I believe we have a presentation on the tentative budget, and the presenter is Vice Chancellor Gerhardt, and I believe he has some conservatively optimistic news for us.
Good evening. I have the pleasure or privilege to present to you this evening the proposed tentative budget for the Peralta Community College District for fiscal year 2013-14. But before I did, I thought it would be in alignment to bring you up to speed or provide you a status update on where the state is at with regard to developing its 2013-14 operating budget and potential impacts that current proposals that seem to have momentum or approval may impact us as the state goes through its budget development process. Yesterday, the Budget Conference Committee got together and agreed upon some major compromises within the budget, really blending together or coming to a compromise on what the Senate, Assembly, and the Governor's May revise really put forward in terms of proposals. And out of that conference committee came some revisions and some additions to what the Governor had presented in his May revise. You may recall, the budget update provided to the Board during the first Board meeting in May, I shared with you that it contained, and the Governor's May revise contained, a cost of living adjustment of 1.57%, while the conference committee agreed or came out of their negotiations with the same number. They also agreed with the Governor in terms of growth money for the district or for community college districts of 1.63%. To put it in perspective, cost of living of 1.57% for Peralta Community College would equate to approximately $1.4 million in additional revenue. Growth money, in terms of increasing the funded base FTES for students that we serve, of 1.63% would essentially fund us for serving or generating an additional 300 full-time equivalent students over which we're funded to serve in the current year. On a dollar basis, that's approximately $1.3 million. A compromise was that in the Governor's May revise, he proposed buying down or the further buy-down of deferrals, essentially borrowing, that the district has to currently do to manage cash flows and operations, buying it, really reducing it down from the $63.7 million that the Governor proposed down to approximately $30 million. And I think the major changes, covering the major changes, you may recall in the Governor's May revise, he put forward a proposal to fund student support services in accordance with the Student Success Act of approximately $50 million. Well, coming out of this compromise or this conference committee, they agreed or endorsed the Governor's proposal of funding that effort at $50 million, but they added to it. They added to it $30 million for deferred maintenance. The last time that Peralta received, or any community college district in the state received deferred maintenance money was in fiscal year 2008, 2009. You may recall, the next year in 2009-10 is when the cuts really started to come down. And in 2009-10, that grant was completely eliminated across all 72 districts. So they're proposing to put $30 million in deferred maintenance, augmenting the existing budgets for DSPS, Disabled Student Services Programs, by $15 million, as well as augmenting EOPS, Extended Opportunity Programs Services, by $15 million as well, and $8 million additional for CalWorks. So to provide you an update, that's where we're at. And then putting it in context of our tentative budget, I'll kind of interweave this data and how it may change our tentative budget that I'm going to present to you tonight as we go down the line or the timelines in terms of getting to September when the Board will see a proposed final budget for adoption. So again, with that, presenting to you this evening the 2013-14 tentative budget, I'm going to focus the first part of the presentation or the discussion really on the process behind developing this budget, really the roadmap in which led us to the numbers in which you see this evening. And that includes following board policies, criteria established in board policies, following administrative procedures, following our shared governance process that we have adopted here at Peralta, as well as timelines that are required in statute. And then leading into the actual numbers, covering the assumptions that were used as the foundation to build this budget, which covered both revenues and expenditures. Given timelines, I was reminded brevity is golden. So I'm going to, out of the 19 funds that the district manages and oversees, I'm going to cover the two funds that most directly impact our daily operations, which are the Unrestricted General Fund as well as the Parcel Tax Fund. We have many other funds, including bond funds, construction funds, grant funds. But I can answer questions that you may have, but they're in the full budget document. So starting off on the policy or the policy side of it in terms of the process used, this budget before you has been presented and, or has been prepared in accordance with all the new APs that we have as a result or really the effort behind Mr. Grivitch and the shared governance process and the committees that were involved in that. In particular, this budget is a balanced budget. Revenues equal expenditures. We are not going in or planning to go into the year with a structural deficit. In addition to that, it meets certain criteria. It also provides for a reserve for contingencies of no less than 5%, which is what is specified in Title V. It also has been presented or prepared in accordance with the state's budget and accounting manual, which essentially prescribes the manner, the account codes, and some of the accounting nuances of it that are required, again, in Title V. It has been prepared with the assumptions that were developed within the framework of our shared governance process and has really been vetted through all those committees and with the purpose and intent of transparency and seeking input. And lastly, it's been presented in accordance with the calendar, Budget Development Calendar, again, under Administrative Procedure 6200, Budget Development and Monitoring. We're required to bring to the Board of Trustees no later than the end of January, a Budget Development Calendar. And that's really something that we stressed in terms of putting together this administrative procedure in particular, because in prior years, that necessarily wasn't done in a timely manner. So I know this is a bit overwhelming much, but I just wanted to provide to you or remind folks of our shared governance process. And at the top left, it's our PBIM Committee Membership, and really is our framework of our collegial consultation, our shared governance, really with the focus of generating dialogue, transparency, and seeking input from all constituent groups. The PBIM stands for Planning Budget Integration Model. And in the context of this evening's presentation or discussion, the committee within that framework that has the charge or has the responsibility for overseeing the budget development and whatnot is the District Planning and Budgeting Council. It's a council made up of representatives of faculty, staff, administration. And really, again, in the context of the discussion of this budget, the Planning and Budget Council, the PBC, known shortly, has really started its work on the assumptions and the framework for this budget last December. And so beginning there through today is really the roadmap in which this budget has gone through to come to the form that you see it today. It's been a very long and very thoughtful and deliberate process. The calendar you see before you, again, is just, it's one that is called for in our administrative procedure, but also one that went before the Board or goes before the Board every January. We update it based upon dates. January 22, 2013, the Board of Trustees approved this calendar, and we held to it, really leading to what you see here today. Now, just focusing on the bottom three dates, June 11 this evening. So to this evening, we're having this presentation of the budget. It's on the agenda tonight as an informational item. And at the next Board meeting on the 25th is when we're asking the Board to approve or adopt it. The purpose of that is so that we have spending authority for our new fiscal year, July 1. And then as the state finalizes its budget and any impacts of whatever changes that may come out of the state's budget will be incorporated between June 25 and September 10, when the final adopted budget will come back to the Board, will be incorporated in the final adopted budget, and the Board will be provided the changes, those changes and the ramifications or impacts upon our operating fund at that time. So that's kind of an overview of the process used and the timelines and some of the critical features or elements of the policy and the development process. Now getting into really the numbers. And again, this is where the Planning and Budget Council and the Shared Governance Process really began the work in terms of evaluating and reviewing the assumptions really that set in place the numbers that we'll get into here in a moment. General assumptions, the budget is balanced, as mentioned before, revenues equal expenditures. There's no structural deficit that we're going into the fiscal year. There is a contingency for reserve of no less than 5% in that we utilize our shared governance model in terms of its development. The revenue assumptions, the first one is not necessarily a budgetary impact, more of a cash flow consideration, making sure that we have available cash to pay our obligations as they come due. And really, the need on which we come before the Board asking for the authorization for short-term borrowing through the tax and revenue anticipation notes. General apportionment deficit factor of 2%. Really what that is, is a safeguard against any shortfall that we may encounter in terms of local property taxes or in shortfall in collection of student enrollment fees. We have factored in enrollment growth of 1%. You may recall, based upon information I shared with you prior to entering this PowerPoint, in the conference committee, they're discussing enrollment growth of 1.63%. Should that 1.63% be enacted when the Governor signs the budget, that will be one of the changes that will come back, the difference between this budget and the one that you'll see in September and reflected in our FTES targets and our strategic planning during the course of the year. No cost of living has been incorporated in this budget again. That is maybe one of the changes, hopefully, one of the changes that will come back, differences between the tentative budget and the final adopted budget in September. But again, based upon the Governor's May revise and the conference committee, there may be funding for cost of living to the tune of 1.57%. With the enrollment growth, funding of additional FTES of 1%, that would bring our funded base FTES at the state level up to 18,300 rounding 28 full-time equivalent students for credit and approximately 83 non-credit full-time equivalent students. Property tax receipts were projecting relatively flat compared to the prior year, maybe a modest increase of less than 1%. It's based upon information that we received from the County Comptroller's Office. And then lottery funds. We receive lottery funds, the state lottery. We get funding information from the lottery from the state. Based upon what information they've provided to us, we're going to get funded at lottery about $124.25 per FTES. Dollar value-wise, that equates to approximately $2.3 million into our unrestricted general fund. Expenditure assumptions, we've budgeted for step-in column increases for all eligible employees. We've factored in the PERS, Public Employee Retirement System District Employer Contribution of approximately 11.4%. We've kept or budgeted in the DSPS contribution of 1.15%. That's been the same amount for at least the last three years. And we've also budgeted in the medical renewals or premiums based upon renewals from our medical service providers. Also, really positive news is that based upon our new actuarial study that we received, the OPEB has gone down approximately 4.5%. I'm sorry, question?
I had a question about the COLA, because I thought that there was a 1.57 adjustment in the Governor's budget that would be effective July 1. It's still tentative because it's not the final, as you mentioned. But was that information out? I just got that, what was this, Tuesday? No, wait a minute. No, yeah, today. Okay, pass my bedtime. I just got that today. So is that, did that just come out? And so we would have, would we be presuming a COLA or would we wait until?
We typically have been, we wait until it's enacted by statute. Without, you know, what we want to avoid is putting something in the budget and not materialize and then having to go back through our process and make cuts and reductions.
Okay, thanks.
Included in this budget is restoration of funding for 20 full-time faculty positions that have been allocated to the colleges in alignment with our budget allocation model. Restoration of funding for 15 classified positions using the same model and the same process. But it's not listed on here, as well as restoration of funding for four deans, one at each of the colleges, as well as positions at the colleges for the Director of Student Life positions. So let me jump here and then go back. The revenue, based upon the revenue assumptions that we looked at, here's the summary, a high-level summary of the state revenues. And the way this is formatted, it's a little bit of a change from the formatting that we used last year. Based upon suggestions from Board members, we added a couple columns here. So really, the purpose of the night and the purpose of really the action on the 25th is to approve a 2013-14 tentative budget. And that's the second column that you see there. So the state revenues for the 2013-14 tentative budget, based upon all the revenue assumptions, is approximately $68.4 million. Comparing that to the final budget that was approved by the Board in September 2012 for fiscal year 1213, that was $60.2 million. That's an increase of approximately $8.2 million. And the reason for that is the passes of Prop 30, which wasn't passed until November after the Board of Trustees approved the final budget. Local revenues for 2013-14, approximately $38.3 million. That's about a decline of about $2.2 million. That's related to, primarily related to not getting or not receiving some one-time state money that we had received in the past. And then the transfer reserve revenue is the revenue coming in from our OPEB trust to reimburse the general fund for the current expenses that we pay during the course of the year for current retirees. So it's really a reimbursement of the general fund. The next slide here, what I wanted to do or focus on is to talk a little bit about Prop 30. You may recall, when the Governor put together his budget in June of 2012 for the current fiscal year 1213, it was based upon an assumption that a ballot initiative in November was going to pass. And so when we developed our budget, we assumed it wasn't going to pass because of the risk of having to make a workload reduction. the risk of having to make a workload reduction six months into our year to the tune of about $7 million, was something that we couldn't necessarily afford to shoulder with, into six months into our fiscal year. Thank goodness and fortunate for us, Prop 30 passed. And so as a result, what had happened is that it basically kept the status quo for all intents and purposes. Prop 30 did not or does not provide any additional new revenue for us, but rather it holds off workload reductions that we would have otherwise had to make should it have failed. So what this slide is meant to show is really, because of the passes of Prop 30 and the money that's being derived because of Prop 30, which is basically tax increases over a seven-year period, it changed fundamentally our revenue, our operating revenue. And I think it's something that is worth noting in terms of, especially in terms of the long-term planning. What the, just kind of jumping to the areas that have the brackets in the middle, is that you see pre-Prop 30 on the left-hand side shows general apportionment revenue, which is the main funding source, operating source for the district of approximately $65 million. Well, what Prop 30 did is essentially split that into really two major components. You still have your general apportionment, but rather it being $65 million, it's now $38.4 million. And the 15.7 million now is Prop 30 funding, or what they call EPA money, Educational Protection Account. Now, that money is seven years in duration, but over the next seven years, we're basically planning or putting plans in place to, when that tax sunsets and goes away, that essentially we need to have that amount of money in place to backfill it, ongoing money, not one-time money in nature like Prop 30 is over a seven-year period. And so, we're putting those plans in place, but I think it's critical to note, especially now, because any additional ongoing money that we receive between now and seven years from now, need to have that in the back of our minds so that we don't end up in seven years having to make knee-jerk reactions or cuts to balance our budget. On the expenditure side, here's what it looks like at a summary level and bear with me. This again shows the 2013-14 tenet of budget being the first column with numbers in it. The 1213, the current year budget, and then the working budget as of April 30th is when we started running the reports to put together and generate this report and then actuals. And the percentage changes on the right shows the changes in the 1314 tenet of budget compared to the 1213 budget in terms of a percentage change, but also in terms of an absolute dollar change.
The structural impact of that Prop 30 money is to carry forward a need to backfill then, so that we have it now, but we won't have it till forever now, we'll be counting on not having it. Is that, did I hear that right?
The message that I tried to convey was that it is one-time money. It is one-time money every year for the next seven years. So, as we get new money in, for example, the 1.57 million, you know, percent in COLA, that's ongoing money. Or if the 1.63% in growth money materialize, if either of those materialize, we need between now and seven years from now to, basically to have a plan to put some of that aside to offset this $15.3 million seven years from now, when those taxes related to Prop 30 sunset.
So the question is, maybe it's a bit foreboding, have we built a structural deficit? I mean, is that what, is that the overall, the long-term budget impact, is that kind of what you're?
We have built a budget based upon revenues that we know we're going to get over the next 12 months, operating cycle. A component of that revenue is revenue that in eight years from now will not be available unless those taxes are renewed or unless the state provides us additional ongoing dollars to offset that reduction.
So as a legislative matter, we need to make sure that we never, that we find a way to renew that source of income because what we're doing is counting on, we're building it in and we're saving away for a rainy day, but should it storm, if everything, if things don't go as we plan or as we hope, then we could be caught in the same situation that we needed Prop 30 to get us out of.
Unless we plan to do otherwise, yes.
Mr. President, I'd like to follow on with what Trustee Brown's talking about here. This is actually a little more complicated than just a pictorial kind of thing because what you're talking about is not having a set of funds that is the equivalent of Prop 30, but a flow of funds. And have you noodled out and constructed in your mind how you're going to segregate out these funds and put them into a quasi-trust containment so that when the curtain drops in seven years and those funds disappear, you do in fact have something to take its
Noodling out, yes. We've started to put together a plan for that eventuality in seven years and a plan that is a multi-year plan that, you know, we're not going to get $15.3 million in one year, in one storm or wave, if you will, tsunami to offset that EPA funds. But we have to put a plan and start to put a plan in place now for that eventuality. Now, in terms of the state and how their requirements on us for classifying and recording these expenditures, it's been somewhat of a mixed message because in the accounting advisories from the state and State Chancellor's office, from their perspective and their viewpoint, they've been very explicit in that this is unrestricted general fund money, but the prohibitions on use is you cannot use it for salaries and benefits of any administration, which includes district administration, college administration, instructional administration. It has to be used solely for instruction and student services, which in this budget, we have done so. And you'll see in our 311, which will be presented to the board in October, which is our annual financial statement for the state, you will see a separate schedule outlining all those expenditures and that they were not used for administrative purposes. I'm not sure necessarily that answers the second part in terms of a trust. The state is basically requiring us to incorporate this into our operating fund as if it were ongoing money, but we know different in terms of the ballot language has those additional taxes expiring in seven years. But we've started to put together a place, a multi-year plan for that eventuality.
And along that same line, we have some property tax funds that are going to go away. Are we doing the same thing?
Yes, we are doing the same thing. We are doing the same thing as well. And Measure B was for eight years and so both of those sources of revenue to support our operations, they both expire about the same time. So.
Okay, thank you.
The expenditures shown here, just kind of some highlights or points of notation is the full-time academic, those are primarily our instructional faculty. You may recall in the final budget for, the adopted budget for 1213, at that point in time, because of the passage of the parcel tax, we started to incorporate funding or restoring positions, full-time faculty positions, to fund the additional sections. Well, in addition to those 21 positions as part of that 18.3, 18.4 million, we've added since then an additional 20 positions in light of the passage of Prop 30 and some other things going on. So, because of, because of the additions and restoring those positions, full-time academic budgets is approximately $21 million. That's an increase of about 14% and on a dollar value, an increase of approximately $2.6 million. The other area that you'll see an increase is in the academic admin. Over the last few years, we've been purposefully trying to restore some of the cuts that were made to dean-level positions in the past or more recently, they've been funded on soft money. There's been a conscious effort to build them back or bring them back into ongoing money for the support and operations of the colleges. Classified salaries, line item there is approximately 22.9, almost $23 million. And again, that increase is partially because of step and column increases based upon the collective bargaining agreement, but also, as I mentioned before, we have funded, restored funding for 15 classified positions. The other area of increase, a large increase relatively, is on the debt service transfer. Now, somewhat misleading, we need to work on our characterization, but what that $6.2 million covers or encompasses is the DSPS transfer contribution, they mentioned before, about $1.15 million, but really our debt service on our OPEB bonds. And between the 1213 budget and the 1314 budget, based upon our debt service schedules, our debt service, our debt principal and interest payments, our debt payment is going to go up by about $1.3 million. And so, we've reflected that into our budget accordingly. So that is the revenues and expenditures of the unrestricted general fund. And what I'd like to highlight some things on this chart or this, yeah, this chart, is that this, you may recall, presented something similar to this for the final adopted budget last September, but what it does is puts into context and perspective three different critical pieces of information. The first of which is what is our actual FTS? How many students are we serving over the last 10-year period here that is shown? In addition to that, it's showing what students of who we served, how many of those students who we were actually funded for by the state. More recently, it's been our goal, our enrollment management, part of our enrollment management goal is to serve approximately 300 full-time equivalent students above what we are funded from the state. And that is a precautionary measure to keep some close alignment with serving enough, serving the amount of students that we're funded for, but also keeping, going over that to make sure that we're not in jeopardy or reducing the risk of being in jeopardy of leaving any money on the table in Sacramento. And then the green line or mustard line, if you will, is our, the dollars, dollars associated with the funded FTS. So, based upon incorporating into this budget enrollment growth of approximately 1%, our funded FTS next year is projected to go up to 18,411 FTS. That again is an increase of approximately 300, or yeah, approximately 300, a little less than that from the prior year based upon 1%. But I always like this chart, it's interesting because I think it really tells the tale over, you know, what some coin as somewhat the lost decade, in terms of looking at the number of students who we're actually funded for, kind of carrying it past or through the years past. If you were to draw a line and look over to the last year in this 10-year period in which we're serving the same amount of students, you would have to go back to fiscal year 2005, 2006, when that's when the last time the state was funding us for the same amount of students who we're funding today. And so, you know, I think it's an interesting note. That being said, over the last, really, 2009, 10 is when really we started to get hit hard with the workload reductions. But since that period of time, we've essentially been defunded, if you will, I make up my own vocabulary here, of approximately 15, almost 1,600 FTS. On a dollar value basis, that's approximately $7.2 million reduction out of our general fund budget. So, this news from the conference committee and the news coming from the state in terms of the revival or turnaround of our economy is positive news, but as CBOs around the state, we always keep it in light and in context of, well, it's going to be a few years before we get to where we were prior to 2009, 2010. The next area, again, the parcel tax before I sum up here is, here's the revenue and the expenditures budget for 1314 for the parcel tax, where the budget was for 1213 and then working budget and percentage change. The largest, the single largest area where we're spending our parcel tax dollars is in our part-time faculty areas, really to fund sections, additional sections as well. Next year, it's projected to go up by about $1.4 million. And the reason for that, it's somewhat interesting in that, looking at the 1213 working budget as of 430, we had a, we have or had a budget for part-time academic, part-time faculty budget of approximately $5.2 million. But the other large area that consumed our budget that we didn't really anticipate on the passage of Measure B was that we had a, very quickly received a bill from the county registrar of voters to the tune of about $1.3 million for election expenses and printing. So, that expense was one-time in nature, we don't have that again, so that money is then being freed up to go. No, it's not. A few high-level observations or comments on the parcel tax during, especially this spring, we've used it to fund approximately 700 sections or classes. We've also used it to support four positions for instructional aids, instructional assistance, and one position for Moodle, which is our online education platform. So with that.
Vice Chancellor, on that, on Measure B, 7.5 in your, 7.8 million? So you're saying, I thought the total revenue is going to be closer to 9 million. Is that not accurate for Measure B, it's actually 8?
Well, we're anticipating 8 based upon, based upon about 161,000 parcels within our, within our district. So, I hope it goes higher, but based upon information that we've been provided by the county of Alameda, we're anticipating approximately $8 million.
And then, what is the equipment for capital outlay? What is that, what are you allocating there?
We used as part of, as part of our restoration, coming into this, coming into the 1213 year, across the district, anticipating or planning for a scenario of Prop, or if Prop 30 failed, what we did is we made reductions in, for example, instructional supplies, instructional equipment, hourly instructional aids and whatnot. So, with the parcel tax money, we use a part of it to restore those cuts made at the colleges. And so, for example, the largest area for books, supplies and services are really instructional supplies, lab supplies. Instructional equipment is instructional equipment, computers for labs, whatnot, biggest areas I see. They're more.
And those expenditures are within line of the parameters of the parcel tax language?
Yes, they are. Yes, they are.
Ron, just a quick question on the OPEB reserve fund. You say that it was reduced from 14% to 9.5%. How did, how did you accomplish that?
The percentage, that's based upon the actuarial study. And really, that's a direct result from that actuarial liability going from 221 million down to approximately 183 million and change. And so, because our liability has gone down, so has our need to, some need to set aside the, that OPEB charger, money to fund the OPEB liability for current employees. So it's a direct result.
Half of our liability, that's the one picture of liability. The other picture we have is we have to pay those bonds off.
The debt service, yes.
Yeah, we got to pay them off, not just the debt service. Somebody's got to write a check, pay them off. Anyway, I'm a little concerned about backing off from pay-as-you-go and hoping for a, something great to occur down the pike. And this has, I have another question having to do with counseling. The counselors at Laney dropped from 870,000 to 740,000, which is far different than what the other and forty thousand, which is far different than what the other three colleges.
The, our faculty are on a ten-month contract, but that being said, there's provisions in our contract to allow faculty to work in additional, including counselors, an additional eleventh month, or an additional eighty-three days. So, the reductions that you, you see there in the tentative budget are a reflection of, well, when comparing it to the current working budget, in the current working budget, the majority of those faculty have been assigned an additional eighteen days. So, as a result, their budgets for those counselor positions, or those counseling budgets, have been increased to fund those additional days, eighteen times their hourly rate, times however many faculty are given those, that additional eleventh month. So, what, the difference really isn't necessarily a reduction in, in counseling necessarily, but what I think it more is a reflection of is that bringing back down those, those budgets from an eleven month, which is contingent upon funding, and contingent upon the approval of the college, down to a ten-month, which is their full-time contract, basically not getting the funding for the additional days. We did set aside, in, in working with, working with PFT, we did set aside funds within the college budgets in another line item to fund that, that additional eleventh month for those, for those counselors, but it's not necessarily reflected in that line item. It's getting into the weeds, per se, but we haven't had a reduction in counselors compared to the twelve thirteen budget. I think it's more of a, the budget that you're looking at, the reduction, it's in another area based upon workload, based upon approval, and based upon some of the criteria in the PFT contract.
Okay. Just a couple of questions, and I'm focusing on Laney, not just because of the numbers are bigger, not because of a particular college, but medical coverage for the classified personnel at Laney went up thirty-six point four percent. How would we get that kind of a, of an increase? Seems about three times.
The, the reasons why we would do that is if there were that many new positions or a significant number of new classified positions added to that budget, and therefore added to the medical. Another instance, or another reason why we may have an increase is if we had, based upon open, open enrollment and renewal, if we had classified folks changing from one medical plan into a more expensive medical plan.
That was, that was one of the reasons I asked the question, is whether we had a migration that caused that. It's pretty substantial.
You know, I don't have the numbers off the top of my head. I apologize.
And the last question I have has to do with self-insurance. Self-insurance going from last year to this year is up twenty-seven and a half percent? What's causing that? Why do we have to have more insurance than we've had in the past?
Well, I guess, just a clarifying question, are you looking at our self-insurance fund?
Mm-hmm.
Which is, okay. The self-insurance fund, we changed, great observation, we changed, in particular, how we accounted for certain insurance programs that we have here at Peralta. We basically have three main insurance policies, if you will. We have our medical and dental, which primarily go through the general fund, that don't necessarily come, they don't come through this fund. What comes through this fund is our property and liability insurance, which would belong to a JPA, which there was a renewal in our premiums for participation in that. I mean, technically, we're self-insured, but it's a pooled risk approach.
Right.
And we also have work comp, which has increased as well, based upon our, our rates and utilization of our work comp. But also, the change really occurred with our student insurance, and our student insurance rates went up considerably. Last year, we had a few instances of torn ACLs, blown-out knees, and a few other things that really increased our student insurance rates.
Yeah, we're talking three hundred thousand dollars. Okay. Thank you.
I have one question, Ron. Thank you very much for a very clear presentation, and all of this information is, is very digestible. But, of course, we do have some questions. I'd like to go back to that original chart, the pre-Prop thirty and the post-Prop thirty, and the concern over the disappearance of the EPA portion. As you look, this is, are, are they telling me, or us, rather, that our apportionment would have been a mere thirty-eight million dollars if Prop thirty hadn't passed? That is, looking at the orange section there? What it looks like to me is they've taken our normal allocation and simply taken our sixty-five million that we got the previous year, and taken a chunk of it and called it EPA funds. That is, it's a sequestration that actually comes out of our budget, period. So, it doesn't make any sense to me when you, when they say it's going to disappear, does that mean that our budget, our allocation, let's just say it was disappearing today, that we would have only a thirty-eight million? Is that the consequence? Put it another way, if Prop thirty hadn't passed at all, what would have happened? What would have our budget actually have been? So, in other words, I think there's the little mirrors and smoke and other stuff going on here that doesn't make a lot of sense to me. Okay, thank you.
Yes.
Very clear.
Based upon information that we, we were provided leading up to the November election, we were told that had or should Prop thirty not pass, we would receive a workload reduction in excess of seven percent. Really, for, for us, that would be somewhere around twelve to thirteen hundred FTS, and would equate to somewhere around between seven and eight million dollars. So, no, it doesn't necessarily line up, but you're correct in terms of the message in that what they've done is taken everybody's general apportionment and really split it into, into these two segments that you see. And, you know, really, the concern, not necessarily that imminent concern as in tomorrow or next year, but one thing that we need to keep our gray cells focused on and our eyes focused on, is really that when Prop thirty goes away, so does a significant portion of our funding. Now, between now and then, hopefully, that we will continue to get growth money and COLA money that over a period of time will, will be equal to or greater than the Prop thirty money, but that, that is a risk. There are no guarantees.
I, I understand that. I'm just saying, as it's presented here, it's, it's untenable in terms of just keeping the colleges, et cetera, going, that we would suddenly lose that fifteen million. What I'm getting at is that we, in planning for the possible reductions, or the loss of those funds when they disappear, and assuming that nothing happens to the economy and all this other sort of stuff, that we don't become so ultra-conservative that we don't do the kinds of things that are necessary for our campuses to keep them alive and well, and as much as possible near the state of art that I think is required for prestigious college like the Peralta system here. So, that's what I'm saying. As I look at it, it's a sequestration of a chunk of money that we would have gotten anyway, but what it gains is that if it's for educational purposes only, it's kind of like a little miniature fifty percent law, where you can only spend this money for specific activities, and which forces us then to be pushing our funds towards education as opposed toward, you know, other matters. That's the way I would read this. So, any rate, thank you. If I've made any errors in that, I appreciate you pointing them out.
Perfectly clear.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question, Mr. President. In sort of the summary for the district office service center budgets, it's a good enumeration of what all the district offices' budgets are. I'm trying to get a sense, it's hard for me to understand, for example, in, in information technology, we have a budget of two point eight million, and for a district this size, I'm not sure how that adds up to another sort of similar type of institution, is that within the ballpark? I'd be curious to know that. You know, general services, a four point three million dollar budget, is that, I'm trying to understand sort of a, I wish I had a comparison to see other districts of our size, how much they spend on IT, for example? Any sense of where we are in that range?
Well, I'm not necessarily as versed on, on the comparison with general services, but I am very familiar with the IT. And for a district this size, we're, we're on the lower end of the spectrum in terms of the amount of money, ongoing general fund money that we dedicate and devote towards our IT infrastructure. But this, this being said, too, in full disclosure, is that this is the general fund. There is another fund, which we fund IT, which is the funding of the IT strategy projects, but that money is one-time in nature, and they're coming from bond funds. So, between now and then, through the planning and priority, district planning and priority process, Mr. Madlock and myself are putting together program reviews, administrative program reviews, and going through the process to articulate the need for augmenting that to a point where it's more in alignment with the district our size, and really to augment the support services that we're expected to provide district-wide.
Two more quick questions. One is around the student fee per campus. So, I remember when I enrolled at a class, I had to pay a two-dollar fee for that particular campus, but if I go to multiple campuses, do, are you levying that two-dollar fee for each campus you attend, or is that a one-time enrollment fee? Because I notice you have in your budget the student fee by campus. So, how does, how is that allocated if you attend multiple campuses? Is it just like an additional two dollars that's allocated to each campus?
The, the student center fee is a two-dollar fee that is permissible under, under Title Five in the state's budget and accounting manual, and the purpose is it to, to support the operation, maintenance, construction, renovation of that college's student center. Now, specifically to your question, off the top of my head, I'm not sure if it's your home college, or if it's each college you attend. I'd have to check back to our fee policy, because off the top of my head, I don't want to misadvise you.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not sort of charging students twice for that if that is the case. Then, lastly, I noticed the bookstore projections are, you're projecting forty percent decrease in revenues for the bookstore. What's leading you to lead, make that projection?
Well, the, the budget you see for the, the tentative budget is reflective of what we're actually collecting today. And so, you know, we've, at least in the last three years of my tenure here, I have seen a sizable reduction in the bookstore revenue. Now, to put it, the bookstore revenue, really, that's commission revenue that we receive, or the colleges receive back from Follett, and it's based upon a percentage of sales that derives or, you know, determines the amount that comes back to the colleges. And over the last three years, there has been an annual steady reduction in bookstore sales in general, which then has, in turn, translated into a reduction of the commission money coming back to the colleges.
The reason I bring that up is because when trustee Handy and I were on the student services committee that no longer exists, at that time, we were looking at the agreements that the college had with Follett, and at least at that time, there was some want to revisit that agreement and look at how we can get a better deal for our students. I'm not sure when that contract is up again, but certainly, if there's decline in revenue, that would prompt me to look at that item and say, you know, what's going on here? Can we do better than what we're doing currently? Thank you, Mr. President.
Are there any further?
I have one, just one additional question.
Please.
Getting back to the disappearance of funds. With measure B, you've set it up so that it, the funds are invested in part-time faculty, which those funds go away, and we don't have extra funds coming in. You can adjust. Hopefully, with the Prop thirty funds, you're doing the same thing, that those funds are invested in a commitment that is not a continuing commitment. I have a concern that if we look at it strictly from the revenue side, like growth or COLA, those funds get absorbed into the ongoing flow of the river. And the only way that I can see that you're going to be able to, and the reason I'm bringing it up now is that we're setting the base here, that we don't want to make commitments that are going to put us off on a cliff in eight years.
Very, very valid point, and that's something we discussed in cabinet as well as in the, in the planning and budget council, is really the, the focus and goal of not using those one-time in nature funds for ongoing commitments or funding permanent positions. So, that, that has been our focus in what we've done today, is with, with regard to the faculty. I mean, right now, the only, the only funds that, the only positions that are being supported by these funds are really those five classified positions, the instructional aids and the Moodle support, which we, part of our plan, longer-term plan, is to shift those to the general fund once this ongoing dollar, these ongoing dollars, i.e. the growth and the revenue, become available.
Mr. President, I think what I'm getting from this budget is that we're just trying to get back to where we were. I mean, we're just basically trying to get, restore what, all the cuts that we've made. You know, it's kind of hard to plan out eight years into the future, but certainly, I take this safe harbor now, and, you know, let's do the best that we can with it to restore access to, to our students, and I'm glad to see that in this budget.
Thank you.
And I'm also glad to see money for growth. It's a nice augur for the future. Are there further questions? If not, thank you very much, Vice Chancellor, and I appreciate the work that has gone into this and the clarity with which it is presented. Thank you very much.
Thank you. It's been a team effort.
I believe that if, as I'm skipping through, I believe that was the last official item, so let's look, turn to the.
A move to approve the consent calendar, Mr. President?
Yes. There is a move to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? The consent calendar passes as is, with no modifications, and my understanding is there were no speakers on any of those items.
That's correct.
We have some announcements. We are not closing this meeting, but what's going to happen after these announcements are main, we are actually going to reconvene in the closed chambers, and we will deal with some of the items that we were dealing with before. And if we make any decisions, we, these will be presented at the next public session, I think that's on the twenty-fifth of, of June. And with that, I thank you, and we'll have our closing comments.
Sure. Just a few brief announcements. The next regular board meeting of the Board of Trustees will be held in two weeks, on June twenty-fifth, here in the district offices' boardroom. Also a reminder that the districts and colleges will be on a summer four-ten-day work schedule and closed on Fridays and weekends from June seventeen through the twenty-sixth. The board would like to send congratulations to Calvin Madlock, the IT and colleges team for the successful recent upgrade of our PeopleSoft system, so congratulations to all involved in that process. Also like to recognize the Altisor Transferring Club members for our graduates' acceptance to four-year colleges, and fourteen of them got into the UC system, and three of them got into Cal State, and one of them to Mills College. So, congratulations to Professor Duran, his students, and everyone up at Merritt on that wonderful track record. Also to Berkeley City College Multimedia Arts Showcase for their Inspire Berkeley Billboard Design Awards also. The board would like to wish all the fathers and soon-to-be fathers a happy Father's Day this next Sunday. And lastly, we'd like to send sympathies and to the family and friends of longtime hourly counselor at Merritt, at Merritt College, Charles Kennedy, upon his passing, and also to the victims down in Santa Monica College and their community for their tragic, tragic happenings and violent recent losses. With that, Mr. President, that concludes the announcements for this meeting. Maybe not. Oh, it is? Oh, it's actually here. Is there, is this a last meeting for one of our presidents?
She didn't tell me. She's supposed to be here in July.
Yeah, you're going to be in July.
June twenty-fifth. June twenty-fifth.
Okay, let's make it official, this is Dr. Jackson's last meeting. This is Dr. Jackson's last meeting. And I did prepare a speech, but I left it for the June 25th meeting. Dr. Jackson, thank you very much for your service, and good luck in your new position as chancellor. And remember, one tip of advice, it's not all fun and games.
Well, it hasn't been approved yet, but the reason I won't be at the June 25th board meeting for Peralta is that I will be attending the Chabot-Las Pacitas board meeting, and that will be hopefully when my contract is approved, and then I will be officially going over to Chabot-Las Pacitas as the chancellor on July the 29th. So I have some vacation that I have to take, so that's why I won't be here in July. But I want to take this opportunity, since I have it, to, to thank all of you. It's been a great ride. I've cut my teeth on administrative responsibilities here at the Peralta District, and it's like New York. If you can make it here, you can make it anywhere. So, thank you very much for all of your support. I appreciate it.